Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting into open session and ask for the opportunity to report out from both sessions.
I am C1. It is on the consent agenda. I am C2. No action to report. I am C3. No action to report. I am C4. No action to report.
Okay. We will move to the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are none.
And we'll move to information, age six, student representatives' report.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Graz and I'm Eureka FFA's school board representative. We have had a busy past month. We had a booth at the Eureka High Give It A Hand and Academic Fair. While there, we shared what FFA is about and the agriculture industry. We also had our annual FFA School Fair, where we attempted to approve ag literacy in the community by displaying our project animals, floral arranging demonstrations, and natural resources rural recreation displays. In addition, several students put on an agriculture mechanics activity showing their welding and heavy equipment operator skills. At our last meeting, we held officer elections, and the results were Vice President Alana Churchill, Secretary Sierra Holt, Treasurer Kara Klein, Historian Brooke Spencer, Sentinel Widen Islander, ASB FFA Commissioner Katie Spellenberg, Sectional Officer Kelly Boudroti, and I was fortunate enough to be elected the 2011-2012 Eureka FFA President. All these officers will be installed at our annual spring awards banquet this Friday, which you all should have received an invitation. If not, consider this your invitation. We will be serving dinner at 6:00 at the Eureka High School cafeteria. I appreciate the opportunity to serve both the FFA and the school board over the past year. Thank you for allowing me to share our monthly activities with you. It is my privilege to introduce to you the 2011-2012 School Board Representative Lauren Grayden. She is looking forward to sharing all the activities we will be involved in in the next year. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Do you have any questions?
I came up to your dinner and I tried to email and I couldn't figure out who to email, so unfortunately I have another engagement.
Oh, it's okay. Thank you.
Next year.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks for all your reports this year, Chelsea. We really appreciate them.
Thank you for listening to them.
We do. Any others? Student representatives? Doesn't look like it. Okay, we'll move to superintendent's report.
What's being passed around to you is how far we've gotten on the Eureka City Schools Summer Professional Development Academy. What you're being passed out is the sessions calendar. Our sessions are going to be going from Monday, August 8th through Friday, August 19th. This is a mostly complete list, but even now, we're continuing to add things. One of the latest is we're looking at how to add a couple of days of SMARTboard training for our elementary teachers. But one of the things that we've talked about a lot over this year is the essential program components for our school district. And to me, to Cabinet, this Professional Development Academy really supports the essential program components and the direction that we've been moving with Eureka City Schools. Just to name a couple of them, one of the essential program components is the use of standards-based State Board of Education adopted materials. And if you look through this agenda, we are doing, we are having sessions that support both California excursions as well as our mathematics. And it's one of the commitments that this board made was to continue to purchase new textbooks for our students, even though those monies could be swept in other directions. Another essential program component is the use of District Instructional or Assessment pacing guides. We have both math pacing guides and, again, pacing guides for the excursions are part of the sessions that we're going to be offering. Another essential program component is both the continued training for both our school administrators and another one is the ongoing instructional assistance and support for reading, language arts, and ELD, and mathematics teachers through the use of content experts, specialists, instructional coaches. And that's exactly what we're doing here. We're continuing to provide our employees, both administrators and teachers, the opportunity to continue to expand their knowledge and take that knowledge and then turn it into learning experiences for our students. And then another essential program component is collaboration. And one of ours is actually how to use collaboration for results. And then finishing up with a student achievement monitoring system, we have Data Director for both beginners as well as advanced. And then lastly, something that this board does is the implementation of fiscal support to get the full implementation of our essential program components. And by allowing our teachers the opportunity to do this, as well as paying them their hourly wage to do so, which is something that we've all been behind, we are using our fiscal support to continue to improve what our teachers and what of our administrators can do. These sessions are open to board members, and the teachers and the administrators would really like to see you guys pop in and out if you'd like. You're not committed to the day, the two days, or anything like that. I know that there are certain sessions that Cabinet members will be facilitating, but other sessions that we will also just be popping in and out just to get a little taste of what they're doing and the direction that they're going. But we're really excited about this. This is also available to other school districts in the county. It was advertised at the Superintendent's Forum meeting, and it's also on the Humboldt County Office of Education Professional Development page. So anyone in the county that has an interest in one of these, they have the opportunity to sign up and become a part of it. We have also guaranteed our teachers that if they sign up by the 10th, that we'll get them their confirmation of schedule before they leave for their summer break. And if not, they can always contact us during the summer. We're ready to go.
Is this, are these held at the County Office of Education?
They're being held all over. We have some at the County Office of Education and some of them that we'll be hosting as well, just depending on where we can get a facility.
So we'll have another document that'll have the place to go to?
Exactly where they are, and yeah, we'll continue.
Place and time, yeah.
Can I ask what the Breakthrough Coach Training is?
Breakthrough Coach Training is something that administrators and their administrative assistants participate in together as a team. The desired outcome is that the administrative assistant understands a little bit better the role of the administrator and the ways that they can support their administrator to take care of more of the office day-to-day functions to allow our administrators to be out and about in classrooms and actually affecting instruction.
And so that's for the high schools? For that's for the high school, right?
You know, Mickey and I will be attending that, Rich and...
We have, if I can plug in, we have...
Somehow I knew he would.
All of our administrators and their administrative assistants or secretaries, our site administrators, and three Cabinet members attended.
And that will be in San Jose?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
If I could add one more thing. If, I don't know if you've gotten an email yet, but if you desire to register, I will send you an email with a link to Survey Monkey. And then you register for any of these through Survey Monkey.
Do we have to register for just to go?
No.
The second thing I'd like to talk about is the protessis requirement, the Whooping Cough requirement. Assembly Bill 354, which was passed in September of 2010, states that students entering or advancing to grades seven through 12 in the 2011-2012 school year are required to show proof of immunization on or after their seventh birthday. The reason I bring this up is because in the past, when the state has brought things like this to the public and said that thou shalt, there's always been a lot of loopholes and a lot of looking the other direction, saying, hey, you don't have to, let's not worry about this. Eureka City Schools and all the schools in the state of California have no choice but to not allow students into classes if they do not have proof of immunization prior to starting the next school year. One of the reasons I bring it to the board is, first off, just in a FICMAC article that was sent out yesterday, the Corona Norco School District, which is a very large Southern California school district, and their latest assessment, 87% of their students do not have the immunization at this time. The other reason I bring that up, bring this up is also, as we're out and about, all of us have the responsibility to continue to share this. It is on our website, it has been passed out to our students numerous times, but we cannot allow students to enter school. We are actually breaking the law if we allow students to do that. And for those parents that believe that there's a lot of exemptions to this, there are not. There are only two allowable exemptions. The first is a personal beliefs exemption, and it cannot be that you have previously filled out paperwork and therefore it just carries over. You have to actually go into the school and you have to fill out a brand-new personal beliefs exemption. And then the other one is a medical exemption, and it has to come from a doctor and doctor's office and be signed, and of course, they know how to go about that. The other thing is that we have talked, we have contacted the County Health Department and asked them if they're going to be doing any type of mass clinics where they're going to allow people to come through, and they don't have any such plans at this time. And I also know that a friend of mine who has a student who's going to be an eighth grader next year called, and they're now making appointments for late August at the Pediatrics. So they're that far out right now in getting those immunizations. It's going to be really difficult for us to, well, it's not going to be, it's going to be impossible for us to allow students to either get schedules or do anything to enroll in school. So we really need parents to really get on this and move forward. We have no choice in this.
This is eighth, again, the grade?
It is students entering or advancing to grades seven through 12.
Last year, last summer, the Humboldt County Fair, which is in August, the Public Health Department actually had a booth, and they gave the Whooping Cough shots there. I'm wondering if they're going to do that again this year. And maybe they could do one at, is the Redwood Acres Fair being held as well?
I'll ask. The last time we, the last time we coordinated with, yeah, it's, the last time we asked, they weren't going to do anything. They weren't planning any, I don't know why.
It's interesting. They did that last year, but not this year, huh?
What is our mechanism to screen returning students as well as new students?
Our mechanism for screening to allow students in, when it's...
Do they have the information?
We held a training for all of our administrators and school secretaries and others who may be inputting that data. The requirement is that they go to their school right now, where their student is enrolled, show that proof of immunization. It then gets put into the power school, and then what we'll be doing over the summer is generating lists of those who do not have the immunization. And at some point over the summer, we're already using the autodiler, we'll continue to use the autodiler, we'll be sending things home, and as we get really close, it'll probably be a personal phone call home to people saying, hey, you've got to get this done. So we've got our intake in care of. We're ready.
So as we find out any information from either the Public Health Department or even, like, I don't know, Walgreens might be offering clinics, are we going to disseminate that information?
If, yeah, if anyone has that information, we'll get it out on our webpage and can also distribute it through schools or even, again, if it's something that would really work out well for our students, we can even do autodilers.
Because I don't believe you have to have a doctor's prescription in order to have this one. You just can go to Walgreens or CVS or one of those if they have them.
They're all offering.
Right.
Costco has them too.
So it might be much easier to get it at Walgreens and with an appointment with your doctor.
Right, yeah.
That's what I was thinking, but until I just thought of that, I wouldn't have, it wouldn't have clicked. So if we can get that information out to parents, too.
Last two pieces, just an update. We'll be having a principals' meeting tomorrow. We'll be talking about this professional development as well. There is an expectation that our administrators will be attending and participating, like I said previously, finalizing all of our summer school preparation, both for the credit recovery summer schools for junior high school and high school, as well as our jumpstart programs that are predominantly kindergarten, and continuing our discussion on staffing, continue to move forward with that. And just an FYI, you guys were reminded last board meeting, but our Eureka High School music performance is tomorrow night at the Arkley Center. Doors open at 6:30. Program starts at 7:15. That's all I have. Do we need tickets in advance for that? No, you can buy them at the door.
Okay. Board members' report. Fran?
Just by accident, I was at the, they would call it the academic day, is that what it's called at the high school?
Yeah.
I went to do some interviews for scholarships at the high school, and it happened to be on that day, and there was a fire start there and all sorts of things. So I had some time to walk around, and it was wonderful. Didn't have as much time as I would have liked to have had, so next year, I'm hoping I'll know how much, and they did announce it, but I just didn't realize what it was. But anyway, the kids were having a great time, there was music, the quad was really being used, and they were, the kids were really well behaved, and it was wonderful. And I did, we did interview five, four students, high school seniors for scholarships, and again, I'm just blown away by some of these wonderful students that we have at the high school and their skills in being interviewed and their grades and the letters that they, and the letters of recommendation that they get from their teachers, they're well done and everything. It was a very, very, it was a great day.
Hank?
Wendy?
I did get an opportunity to go to the Arkley Center and see, I guess it was the Jazz Band and the Jazz Ensemble, and they were terrific. So if you can get to any of these music, I guess the next two are at the Adorni Center, I mean, at the Arkley Center. They're just, they were, they were awesome. Let me see, I did get to attend the Grant and Lafayette Carnivals, and I'm really happy that Lafayette has gotten their carnival back up and running. It was really fun, and I can understand if there's a couple of principals out there that won't be able to take me seriously for a little while.
They're not.
It was fun. They had a, we had a great time. I attended the last Superintendent's Advisory Committee meeting two Fridays ago, was it? And I just want to say the parents that are involved in that are absolutely to be commended for their dedication. There was one parent there who hasn't missed a meeting. I think Gary Stillman's been on that committee for as long as I can remember. Our kids are in school together. Great information coming out of there, Greg. I really appreciate how you run those meetings, and maybe I'll see you next year. The Project SERVE Committee that I am the board liaison to had its last meeting of the year, and its last meeting, period, since the funding has run out and the position is now vacant. Service learning is going to continue in our schools because we have such a great tradition of service learning, and I just want to say thank you to all those great teachers. And Sue Murray, who headed up the Project SERVE, has done a wonderful job. And PTA District Dinner was a couple of weeks ago, and I want to thank the principals that came and the dedicated PTA volunteers, of which we just never have enough of. And I wanted to say congratulations to Ron Pontoni, who received the Administrator of the Year Award from our sister district over there. He's retiring this year, and the PTA honored him with the Administrator of the Year Award, and it was a lovely dinner.
John?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Well, I attended the Alice Burney Open House, and the classrooms were spick and span, everybody was on their best behavior. And the thing I was the most impressed with was the student writing examples that were on their desks. I mean, it was, I kind of challenged myself if I could guess what grade they were by the examples. Great job. I also attended the Zane Hydration Station ribbon cutting, which I know Wendy went to, which was kind of interesting. You know, I've never seen a little example like this, but it was next to the water fountains, and you can fill your water bottles, so it's green, good, so you're not, you know, you're using your, and you're hydrating. That was what we were, that was the issue with students, getting enough water to drink. The other thing that's coming up is the Lafayette Walkability Audit is coming up Monday, isn't it? Monday afternoon, so there should be a good group, and I will report how that went at the next board meeting. And that's all I have. Is there any public comment on non-agend items? I don't have any green sheets, so, okay, hearing none. We will move on down to the consent calendar. Any questions or clarification by board members?
Yes, I see. On J18, the MOU, Eureka Police Department, the Division of Officers.
Do you have a page number for a second?
Page 27. One year attempt, program termination. This memorandum of understanding will be binding on both entities through June 2011. It's over.
Chief of that one.
You just want a clarification.
Change to 2011.
I think that's a correction. We're going to make that a correction. Okay, any other clarifications, corrections? Okay, if not, I need a motion to approve the consent calendar with the correction to J18.
I still move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar with the corrections to J18. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move, there's no discussion action tonight, so we'll move straight to discussion. L24, report on the governor's May revise.
The evening of the last board meeting, I took off over to ready and went and attended the School Services May Revised Budget.
Can we turn off that one more bank of lights?
Sure, why not? Yeah.
See, you moved the principals from back there, now they're not...
Well, we're moving the principals back there because I continue to play with the lights. So I want to come back and talk to the board about the May revise, and as I told you guys before, the May revise is actually pretty good news. It's not great news, but considering some of the things that have been threatened for schools overall... Overall, it's a pretty good May revise. And I'm just going to roll back because the May revision is actually keeping with the general theme of what Governor Brown proposed when he came out with his January budget. And most of that was, it was an attempt to hold schools harmless. Governor Brown felt that schools had taken enough of the cuts over the past couple of years, and he was trying to keep them mostly harmless, but as politics go, Governor Brown kept one thing out there, which was if he wasn't going to get his tax passage for the tax extensions, that he was going to have to hand that down to schools. And you'll see that he's actually kind of pulled off of that. So it was still, he's still talking about the elimination of the redevelopment agencies, which impacts Eureka as a whole. He's still talking about the realignment of programs from the state to the local level. Governor Brown is very much pushed where it should all start going down to the local level, and the state government should stay out of more of the things that are being done. But here was this big one, he wanted that extension of the temporary taxes by a load of the people. And as we all know, that he couldn't get enough Republican votes to move that forward, so that one's just kind of hanging out there. He tried, he talked about relatively level funding for K-12 education, and we'll see that that has continued. However, community colleges and higher education are still having some significant cuts, and those have remained in the budget. Some things have changed. Tax revenues have increased in the state. The good news to that is that this was what people were calling, and either had to be bringing in more money or cutting money that we spent, and they were trying to balance that budget somewhere in the middle. A lot of the hard cuts were already made, so with more tax revenue coming into the state, that means that they have to have less of those tax extensions than they originally thought, or there's more money coming into the state. Works out really well for schools because schools are funded by Proposition 98, and it's a mathematical formula that's based on the amount of tax revenue that comes into the state. So it's good news for us. Like I said, you have no success in getting Republicans to support the taxes, and the community or the state as a whole really has a lot of pressure on our state legislators for changes to pensions and other reforms. So the big problem is that our state budget is still dependent on future revenues. The state development budget is only balanced if revenues are increased by some future event. So whether that's a tax extension or some other way, that's really the big what-if out there. What if more money doesn't come into the state somehow, whether it's through tax extensions or something else? And then the other piece that they're talking about is that they feel this is all part of what they are now calling electioneering. And the electioneering we'll talk a little bit about in a couple of slides, but it's basically, both sides of the aisle, the Republicans and the Democrats, both feel like they need to have one something, so as they go back to their communities and talk about reelection and other such things, they can say, hey, you know, we did, we got this, you know, our party did this, so stick with us. And then lastly, they're saying that voters will not extend taxes to increase welfare payments or to increase funding for prisons, so we can expect that education is still going to be that bright thing that our politicians continue to throw out as we need more money for education, or, you know, we can't have a test of education. We're still going to be a large part of the topic. So I just, you always have to use a slide of Rocky and Bullwing Plan. But our governor is traveling through some pretty tough waters, and it's all the pieces that I just talked about. So it's tax extension and voter approval if that happens. Pension reform is really sticky form out there right now. Bipartisan support is something he has just not gotten yet. And then this spending cap is the one that did that, where the whole electioneering is going to take place around. Both sides of the aisle are saying that they want a spending cap, and ultimately, that spending cap could ultimately help us. I used this slideshow in the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, and we have a parent from Alice Burney who has a kindergartner and a second grader, I believe, and we had to explain to Rocky and Bullwing her words. So the budget process that you guys are pretty well aware of, but I just wanted to roll through it one more time because it's what we have to follow. So we had, we had the governor, who, he was talking about the governor's flat funding proposal for '11 as well. First off was the result of $19 per ADA, a $19 loss per ADA to schools. And we all looked at that when the governor said it in January, and we said, okay, we can deal with that. We're not happy about it. But then his second piece was that, that he said that there was a loss of Proposition 98 of additional 2.1 billion if the temporary taxes were not extended. And he said if those temporary taxes were not extended, then the cut to schools would be another $330 per ADA loss, a total of $349. And at that time, School Services was saying, you got to do this, and that's exactly what we have to do. When the governor's budget comes out in January, we're required to take what he has stated and move that forward. For Eureka City Schools, that $349 per ADA is about a $1.2 million cut to what we received last year. So we were building budgets that moved us forward towards that. Through the spring, virtually every day, something new came out. The Republicans were going to cross the aisle, the tax extensions were going to happen. No, they weren't. Now they're going to take it off the table. Now legislators are going to do it on their own because they can with two-thirds majority. A lot of conversations, and it just kind of moved us around, but we still had to hold to what the governor said. You can't react to all the things that are happening in between. And then the next piece is the May revise. So in the May revise, like I said, he's taken both this $330 as well as the $19 and that $349, and he's saying schools aren't going to get that. They're not, we're not going to take that away from schools. So on we go. I said it was a good budget, and here's some of the reasons why. There's less reliance on that tax extension. Now there's only 4 billion in election risk instead of the 12 billion. That's the difference in revenues that came into the state. The tax extensions were first needed at 12 billion, now they're only needed at 4 billion. And again, the governor's saying that even if it doesn't happen through a tax extension, he wants to have it come out in other places, and he doesn't want it to come out of education. The 6.6 billion that came through the state is wonderful news. It's new money into the state, and very few people were predicting that we'd have new money. So the cuts to the non-proposition side of the House have already been made, so really that holds us harmless. And then again, Proposition 98 has risen, deferrals might be moved, we'll see how that goes in the next couple of months. But again, overall, we look a lot better in May than we did in January, but we're not out of the woods. Of course not. That'd be too easy. That'd be too easy. So again, the may revision acknowledges that there's a general fund... An increase in general fund revenues. So that there should be, according to Proposition 98, $3 billion more dollars coming to schools. And Governor Brown has said, okay, we're going to... Schools are going to get that $3 billion. We're not counting that money because the way he's talking about giving that money to the schools is not money that we'll see directly. He wants to do it in a couple of different ways. But the big one is, he wants to reverse the $2.5 billion in the K-12 apportionment deferrals. In other words, that money that was supposed to be paid to us in one school year, that through basically budget trickery, he said, okay, we're just... We're going to still pay that to you, but we're going to slide it into next year, and then we'll give it to you then. It was really, really difficult for schools because we still have to pay our bills. We can't slide our bills into the next school year. So what it was really creating was a problem with cash. And so we started having to borrow from other funds to utilize the cash, but then make sure that we were giving back to that fund when the deferral finally did come through. So the governor's first thing... Governor Brown's first thing is he's saying we need to be done with all that trickery, and what we're going to do is we're going to slide that deferral back to where it belongs. One of the reasons that we were really worried that the deferral would never come back is to the state, it's $2.5 billion. I mean, it's a payment that I have to make. So we were worried that they would just continue to shove those deferrals down the road and never really pay them back. But the first part he wants to use is that $2.5 billion in deferrals, so that'll really help us out. He wants to reverse $350 million in community college deferrals. Notice we get $2.5 billion, they got $350 million. Didn't seem quite fair. The other one that we're worried about is he wants to fund mental health and out-of-home care for special education students. He wants schools to pick that up. And normally, that's been picked up by the county. That can be really, really expensive for school districts with just one student. In a district that's our size, you know, a little less than 4,000 students, if we have, you know, 20 students that have some severe mental health referrals that are identified by IEP, so you have to do them, and should, they're beneficial for the student, but that can really cost districts very, very quickly. And that's really an unknown number until you actually start getting into the students' needs and how we need to go about that. So although tax revenues were supposed to compensate today, it's good news, but again, it's not money that we're going to see directly. And again, we had to explain to that parent who Mighty Mouse was. There's nothing wrong with that. Oh, what'd you do? You knew it was sitting there. The big thing is, what both sides of the aisle want to win on is they... Each side's stating that they have put in a cap on state spending in order to control state spending. The Republicans, a long time ago, were saying, you don't need to raise taxes, we don't need the tax extensions. All we have to do is cap spending, and we'll be okay. The Democrats were saying, yeah, we need to cap spending, but it needs to be a little bit from both sides. So where... What it's looking like right now is both the Republicans and the Democrats have come out and said, no more cuts to schools. We don't believe that the $349 should go through to the schools. We think there are other ways to go about it. And both sides are saying, we think the way to go about it is through capping state spending. And the good news is, it looks like both sides are going to take that as their win. The Republicans are going to be able to go back and say, see, we told you. We told you we didn't need all that money in tax extensions, and now we're proving it, and so let's just continue to cap spending, and we'll be okay. And the Democrats are saying, see, we told you, more money was going to come into the state. We'd be okay that way because the economy's picking back up, and at the same time, we're capping our spending. And so this is looking like the win-win, so that both sides of the House or the aisle can go back home to their constituents and say, hey, we won something, and then we need to continue to build on this. So we continue to move forward. The big issue is, it's not an end deal. And so in talking with the county office of education, again, we start in January with what the governor has told us to do, so we're building a budget that had $349 per ADA less for Eureka City Schools. We have a pretty healthy ending fund balance right now, so we knew we could absorb a majority of that. And so Eureka City Schools made the decision that we would go less on the layoffs and the dramatic cuts to our school. We saw the light at the end of the tunnel, and we projected that that light at the end of the tunnel wasn't an approaching train. So we made that decision, took that tactic, and we went that direction. The good news is that right now, unlike a lot of school districts, we aren't having to scramble back and rescind a lot of layoff notices because we didn't originally give them out. However, we have to go on what the may revise says. So the may revise says you're going to get that $349, but it's not written in stone yet. The budget hasn't been signed. So what we're saying is, the legislature really, really needs to sign that because right now, they're basically hanging schools and especially superintendents and boards out there because what our county is telling us is, put the $349 per student on the bottom line, but don't spend it anywhere. So our budget looks really funky right now because it says, you know, it has expenditures, expenditures, expenditures. Our expenditures are a lot higher than our income, but then it's fixed at the bottom line because all of a sudden, we're allowed to stick that $1.2 million back in the bottom line. So it makes our books look a little funky right now because we really should be taking that $1.2 and showing it up in the income, and then the expenditures that go along with it, that kind of evens out. Right now, it looks like we're seriously deficit spending this year, but then all of a sudden, you find it again in the bottom line. So it's really kind of weird how they do it, and we have to keep it that way up until the time that the state legislature actually signs the budget. The other piece of good news is, again, it looks like they're going to have an on-time budget. It is looking like, right now, the state legislature is going to continue to move forward and sign a budget on time. That'll really help us out. If this drags out again until August, September, October, again, Eureka City Schools, because some of the decisions that we made are in a lot better shape than other school districts, but it still makes our books look a little different and really hurts us for some long-term planning that we're looking at and how we meet some of the needs that we're going to have coming up. So again, it's good news, but it's not great news. We need that signature on the bottom line of the budget by the state legislature. The other piece is, they're really hopeful that a budget will pass on time because remember, our legislators don't get paid for every day there isn't a budget, and that isn't retro, so they don't get their money back. So if they don't pass a budget on time, they're working for free for a while. Questions?
Not really a question, but can you either put that on email?
Sure.
Or make copies?
Oh, you want the picture of the superintendent, too?
I don't mind if you put it on email, and I have to print it myself, but... One way or the other.
All right, we'll get it to you. You know, I'll attach it this Friday.
That'll be great. Anybody... I would think everybody would want it.
And the budget will come to us at the next meeting. And for our approval. And then as soon as... Well, assuming that the legislature signs off on the budget and we don't have to... We get the $349, then we'll see that correction at...
Most times, it would drag out until first interim, but if it's an on-time budget, then we're going to turn it around as quickly as we can, and we'll have you guys adopt an updated budget.
So the mental health costs that are normally picked up by the county, do we have any kind of estimate of what we're looking at?
You know, we have a little bit, and Leanne can talk about that in special ed, but remember, some of the things that are taken care of by the county, we're unaware of.
Right.
But I mean, we have a pretty good idea of some.
No, I have a specific example of a district here in Humboldt County who their current share for the mental health costs of a student out of county is a couple thousand dollars because they only pay the educational piece per month. But if this is enacted, that district will have to pay the residential piece, which is approximately $12,000 per month for that student. That's how big of a hit it is.
So how could we possibly work this into our budget?
Yeah. I mean, you can't project it right now. Fortunately, we have very few students who have those services on the IEP. We always work very well with our county mental health agency, and so we've been able to meet their mental health needs in a variety of other ways rather than attaching it into the IEP itself.
But the problem is, the mental health is taking... Going to be taking a big...
If they take the hit, they're saying they're going to have to turn it back to the schools, and they won't be able to support us like they currently are with providing counseling support for kids.
So this would have to be figured into next year's budget?
Depends on if it passes, but yeah.
Any other questions by board members? Any questions by members of the audience?
Leanne?
Yes.
How many IEP students do we already have in Eureka City Schools?
Totally. We have about 600. We serve a population from three to 22, so that includes our preschoolers and our adult students till they turn 22.
Good enough. How many do we have in high school alone?
High school alone, probably about 150, 160. I'm estimating based on we have eight teachers and quickly trying to do the math of their caseloads.
Do you know if that's increased over the last few years?
It actually has gradually decreased. We're running about 11% of our student population have IEPs. And that's been pretty consistent in the 15 years I've been involved as director. Goes from 10 to 12 depending on the year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, we will await the budget at the next meeting. Now we'll move to L-25, summer maintenance projects.
For summer maintenance projects, it's my pleasure to introduce Charlie Bettini, head of maintenance, who's going to run through the list that he has provided for you.
Hi.
It's been kind of an exciting year in maintenance. Last time I was up here, we were wrapping up summer with the Jim Rook project. We finished that up, completed remodeling their old locker room side. Some of our projects that we've completed during the year, our routine maintenance has been installing a play structure at Alice Bernie for the students there that we moved from Lincoln. We poured walkways at Lafayette, installed projectors at the same... And we're currently now in four major projects which are on our summer list. We are building a resource room in Washington's library. We are completing the P-18 duplicating shop over at the Marshall Annex. We had just begun today starting the baseball scoreboard down on field.
Great.
And we're reinstalling auditorium seating on our earthquake project that we also had. One area that we may be able to held up on the rain is we're looking to try and get the stadium bleachers painted before graduation like we always do, but we're keeping our fingers crossed for that weather. Some of the major projects we're looking for this summer, most are going to be done in-house. Obviously, the annex is a top priority on all of us. At Alice Bernie, we've hired extra painters to paint the upper wing. That is needed due to the fact of the air conditions up there are salt and such that are rusting a good portion of the metal structures up there. Lafayette is the next school that we're rekeen to our high-security key system that is registered to us only, so you cannot go down to ACE and get that key copied. So again, we will be completing that this summer as well. Projectors again are going to be installed at Alice Bernie and Grant this year. We also have some also installed scheduled for the HS Science Wing, along with some smartboards in that area. So those are our major projects that we're looking at. There are some maintenance items on here as well. Any questions by the board from our list that we have?
Can I ask about the parking lot at Lafayette School? Is it... That is an in-house?
No, actually, that would have to be contracted out. We have Massim Valarga, the architect, looked at that project. Right now, it's still sitting in their court. We have some drainage issues and such, but I have not seen an estimate yet on that.
Okay. Thank you.
So the Marshall Annex, we're putting them out to bid now?
Yeah, actually, the first bid notice went out this last Sunday. We will have another bid notice go out this coming Sunday. We will have a bid walk on Tuesday, and then I believe it was the 16th is the bid opening with the... Going to the board on the 22nd meeting of June for you guys for approval.
And so assuming we approve one of the bids on the 22nd of June, what's your estimated timetable for construction and move-in?
They would have to get their contractors and bonds in. I wouldn't see them starting work until after the 4th of July. We're shooting for... We've talked about staging the project. That way, we could get accounting, head services, those offices up and running. One of the major construction areas in there is going to be towards the boardroom, which would be in the other hallway. There's a two-hour fire separation that needs to be installed in there because of the occupancy use and upgrades of codes. So that construction can be done while we are still working in that facility. So we may not be completed with the project, but we could still be up and running as a district office.
As of...
Well, we're shooting for mid-August.
Mid-August, okay.
That's when our... We're talking about an install on the furniture for built-ins, so that's what we're shooting for.
Okay. Wow.
Any other questions of board members?
Just want to say the walkways at Lafayette look so much better now, that whole area. What an improvement.
Anybody in the audience? No?
They got me earlier.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay, we'll move to L-26, curriculum adoption biology.
And for the curriculum department and the department.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to present to you in just a moment Mark Bailey, who will be giving us an overview of the recommendation for biology for the high school. As you can see in your green sheet, one of the main reasons is current book they're using is over 17 years old.
Yeah.
I would also like to point out to members of the board, in the green sheet toward the bottom, there are two pricing options, and this is presented to you at the recommendation of the curriculum committee because after we had a chance to take a look at the textbooks themselves and pass them around the table, we realized they're very heavy. But to purchase classroom sets, of course, carries a cost. Mark?
You can test it.
I'm grabbing that one on my foot.
So as Rick said, we have Asian textbooks in biology, and we needed to replace them for 16 years. We went through a fairly exhaustive assessment of what's out there. There's a lot of kind of equalness of textbooks out there and some pretty bad ones. And we ended up looking at several and came down to two, and it was kind of a flip of the coin. In the case of this one, the company gave us two classroom sets a couple of years ago, and Chia Boyer has been piloting that in her room, and she really liked it. So we all looked at the textbooks, and you can see our assessments of them there. We all thought it was great, and so we're requesting to begin with that one.
Isn't this the book... Isn't Zil Barnum also using this book?
Yes, they are.
So that's good.
Yeah, so it's been used now for at least a couple of years.
And she's very happy with it, according to what I understand.
Yes. It's a really good book. And it comes with a lot of supplemental materials, a wide variety, and mostly free, depending on how many we get. And the thing I like is online textbook access for the students. So for every copy that we buy, one student gets to have online access for an interactive textbook online. Lots of other things, lab manuals, which we may or may not use. We have a pretty good lab program already that we really like, and we finally got it integrated in all of the instructors' classrooms. So we like it. We definitely need to add the classroom sets.
I don't want my kid following this back and forth.
And I'm assuming we have the money, or you wouldn't have asked for that?
Yes, this budget.
Okay, I agree. Get the classroom sets.
Out of the 40 chapters...
Pardon?
Out of the 40 chapters... Out of the 40 chapters, how much does contain in one year of biology?
Ideally, all of them. But usually, probably two-thirds that in actuality. There, we have a pretty experienced biology teaching staff. And so we've been able to work with the state curriculum standards pretty well now. And we've been able to weave through and find out prioritization.
Where do we lighten up within this curriculum?
Nothing. Just intensify the amount of time we're spending on each. There's not really any room to lighten up on anything. But these textbooks are always made to be more full than, from my experience with biology textbooks, which has been about 30 years, they're always more full than you can possibly cover anyway. There's a lot of material that, in a typical textbook, that needn't be taught and still be in alignment with state curriculum standards. We can, we can weave several subjects together and be in alignment with state curriculum standards. So we're accustomed to doing that, and it's something we've always had to do.
Any questions by anyone in the audience? No? Board members, are we okay with moving this? Okay, thank you very much. This will be on our next agenda, if I can say. Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Okay. Now we're to L27, Curriculum Adoption, The Language of Composition.
Again, this is a high school proposal for adoption. And it's my pleasure to introduce Ben Henshaw, Donna Dorgi, and Phil Middleis, who made the presentation to our curriculum committee. And after quite a lengthy discussion, the curriculum committee unanimously approved recommending to the board adoption of The Language of Composition. And I'll let the teachers explain why this is such a valuable textbook for the 11th grade English program.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good. Well, here we are. We made it. This is the three junior English teachers from Eureka High, Donna Dorgi, Phil Middleis, and myself. And a little bit of background, we haven't had a reader for, I think the last reader we had was a Viewpoints reader, which I believe, I thought it was mid-'70s, but I think it's section 1981. I've used it sparingly over the years, but they were still beat up and trashed. And so it's just no point in pulling them out. So that's one of the problems with the president chair. Also, this course used to be COOP too for years and years, and it was a semester course. And in the last couple of years, we've moved to a year-long course. And obviously, with that in mind, we need, feel like we need a reader that's going to prepare students for that next step. This is a, this is a challenging reader, and we realize that. And we know that one of the, our tasks is going to be over the summer to get the setup, to differentiate and work on the trend scaffold of these lessons, so it is accessible to all levels. And we think it actually presents itself very nicely, even though you look at it, it looks, it looks high-end. But the essays in there are quite accessible. They have classic, I'm seeing some other things that are quite to be presented here. There are, it starts off each section thematically arranged, and then it goes into classic essays, or a central essay, and a classic essay, which is sort of a dated essay that relates to that theme. And then there are, excuse me, a series of other essays. And including student essays, poems, fiction excerpts. But a lot of this really revolves around nonfiction, which is what students are going to be geared towards in much of their college writing. So that's kind of where we start. I better be quiet.
If I can just give you an example, if those of you who have a book nearby, if you can turn to the education theme section, which is the first actual chapter. And what they do is they've provided within that chapter 12 different short readings, all on the theme of education. And one of the great things about this text is that the readings are at different levels. They're also different genres. And so what we're excited about is being able to use this wide selection of readings as a way to differentiate. So if we're working on the education section, students can be assigned different readings on the same topic that suits their level. But we, as a class, we can all be speaking about the same issues. Then there's a wonderful targeted grammar section at the end of each, and it references the readings. And so all of the grammar exercises are directly tied in to what the students have been working with as far as the fiction and nonfiction literature, which for me is really exciting because it really makes sense, and it's very targeted. Another thing that I'm really excited about with this text and the, there's a teacher supplement, a workbook that's going around as well. And what that puts in it is these wonderful assessment tools, where there are short selected readings, three to five readings, and then a prompt. And so what students are asked to do is synthesize a position after looking at the short readings, then synthesizing a position, and then there's a writing prompt in which they're asked to support their informed decision using references to the material as their support. And this is exactly what colleges, whatever subject, are going to ask our students to do, to be able to recognize the complexity of an issue. So it's not just one piece. It's three to five pieces that show the complexities of the issue, then to formulate their own position, and then to support it with sources, not just how I feel today or what I've seen. So junior English is the last year-long English class that they have. And what I noticed in my juniors is that's the year, now some of them have already decided they're going to college, but a lot of them are really on the fence. They're not sure yet, am I college material or not? But with this textbook, what's exciting is at the end of that junior year, we can say, all right, the material you've been working with is truly college prep. If you are able to master this material and master these skills, you will be able to handle college. And that's an exciting thing to be able to tell students. And they still have that year to make their decision.
I don't have much more to add to that, other than the fact that you're looking at about 75 years, 80 years of accumulated experience, all at Eureka City Schools. And the fact that the three of us are teaching junior English is pretty cool because we're the ones who are launching those going into the senior year, obviously. But senior year is divided into multiple classes and mostly their electives. A few of them college prep and a few not college prep. This is their last, probably for all of them, the last college prep class they're going to have. So the most, the more we can do with them, the better, because hopefully it'll stick. I'm just excited about this book for a number of reasons. Mostly, it's because it's going to be the glue that sort of holds us all together. And in terms of planning together, in terms of creating a structure that is solid and year-round is, I think, really important. It's the one ingredient that's been missing in the junior English curriculum. So this is, this is a good opportunity. And I think it'll focus the curriculum with the three of us. And the fact that we like one another and that we desire the company of one another is, so far, is important. And I think that's probably the best thing that this book has done, is brought us together and made the curriculum a lot more solid, or will, or could.
I think you speak to the word of the cure-all fidelity, and I think it will bring the 11th grade together because it hasn't before. It's been sort of, you know, that independent contracting. Even though we talk about this, when we collaborate, it's, we've sort of been coming at it from different angles. So we've kind of decided, you said, here we are, and let's focus on that. So I hope that's going to be real positive for the whole year.
Can I ask a question? I noticed that the, I like the sections that it's broken into. It has some wonderful. And I particularly liked one on sports and fitness and the one on Joe DiMaggio. But one of the things that I was impressed with in this particular sports and fitness, there's also a list of films that have, that have, you know, classics and like Chariots of Fire and Bend That Light Beckham and all of these things. Do all of the chapters basically have some, throw you that kind of?
Every one has a huge supplemental section, not only films, but also novels.
Yes.
And all the novels that we teach are all mentioned in the book. So that'll be really very convenient to match the novels we've already purchased with the textbook. And then there's also other, other literature that's not included in the text, but is listed as a supplemental.
Yeah, this is wonderful.
There's great cross-references in there in the manual, really.
Yeah, looked good to me.
There are pieces up here.
And our course has been structured dramatically. For example, I've had technology and appropriate technology for mine for the last couple of years. And Donna's had food and all the socio-psychological aspects around all those themes, and sort of building with that. And more or less, all of it is in the book also. So not only can we continue with those themes, but we can start expanding into other things.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Yeah, it's a, it's a real good opportunity.
Well, just reading, look, perusing that book, it made me want to take the class again.
Me too.
Thank you. And you guys are pretty excited about this too, so, great. Any other questions from the audience? No? Board members? We're good? Exciting. This will move on to the consent agenda of our next board meeting. Okay, we're down to L28, Report on Changes to Eureka City Schools Alternative Education Program.
This is taking us all the way back to the board meeting of February 16th. And at that time, I made the recommendation that we close Humboldt Bay High School. And in doing so, to really take a long look at what we're doing at, in all of our other alternative education programs. And what resulted from this is a good conversation between members of cabinet and administrators and as, actually, a large group of people, as what we really wanted our alternative education center to look like and how we would better meet the needs of the students that we currently have and yet remain flexible enough that we can continue to meet the needs of the students we don't know we have yet. So we felt, or I felt, and then gathered the support of Rick Jordan from Eureka High School, Sherry Jensen from Zoe Barnum, Sondi Phillips joined us from Adult Education, Rick, Rich, and Leanne as well. And we thought the best way to talk about this would be to put it in a flyer as to what we're going to do in this program for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, we wrote this flyer to the students. These are students who need to take control of their own learning. And in doing so, we want to empower them to start to create the type of program that they want to see to get them to their goals. And also, we want our students to be able to use this to support them when they are approaching staff members who they feel may have a less-than-enthusiastic attitude about the program that they would like to see us develop for those students. One of the pieces that we talked about was that unfortunately, the name Zoe Barnum has gathered a negative connotation in our community. And as I participate in Rotary and also participate in other functions with professionals in this community, I found that to be true time and time again. I actually had the owner of two very prominent entry-level positions tell me that they would not hire any student who came to them with a Zoe Barnum diploma. And they really couldn't articulate why, and were very surprised when I had a conversation as to what some of the reasons students are participating at Zoe Barnum. So again, we moved forward with this flyer, and in doing so, came up with a name change. And although we are not, this name change isn't in cement, I wanted to build tonight's presentation a little bit on what we call the Eureka Learning Center. And kind of talk about why we chose that and what it meant to us and what we hope it means to our students. First off, and I'm going to go from the back to the front because it's just a fun thing to do. And I'm going to start with the word center. Our desire, and, you know, center is the source from which something originates. And that's our desire, is that when our students come to this center, that all of the things that they need are orbiting around them, that they're the center of attention, and that their needs and their desires to graduate or go beyond graduation, they're the center. And all of the programs that we have are orbiting around them and are able to come in and help them in the areas that they need. We have all the components necessary for students to earn credits through graduation. And the really disappointing part is we've had them for a very long time. We just haven't coordinated them very well. So again, by having a student as a center and making sure that all the programs circle around the student and coordinate to work for the benefit of the student is a very important piece of that. Some of the pieces that we have in place and need to start working better together, first off, is our continuation high school. In the brochure, we're very careful to say that continuation high school is one alternative to our traditional high school. It is not the only alternative. It's one alternative. Eureka High School is still an alternative. They may not be a full-time student there, but they can still earn credits through Eureka High School. They can utilize career tech programs. They can utilize adult education programs. They can utilize ROP programs. They can utilize independent study. And one of the ones that we're really starting to delve into a little bit more is how can our students start to utilize accredited online programs to get them to graduation? And how can we then, with them as the center, utilize all these programs to custom-make a program for these students so they get to graduation? In this flyer, we use phrases like "together, we will build a program." In other words, we're not, you're not, these students are not coming in, and we have program A, B, or C. You take your choice. It's what do you need? How can we work around your schedule? What are your desires? And how can we get you there? And together, we will build a program. Another phrase that's used in this is "in an effort to support your goals." So these programs we're using together in an effort to support the students' goals. It's not what do we want for you. It's you're coming to us. Because remember, these are juniors and seniors for the most part. These are young adults, and it's time for these young adults to take ownership of what they want to do, how they want to get to graduation and move in that direction. And then the other one that we use is that "together, we will complete your path to graduation." And it has to be their path. A lot of the students that we get in an alternative program are the students that the traditional program did not work for them for a variety of reasons. A lot of people want to immediately blame the school, and that's, that's not always the case. A lot of people want to immediately blame the student. That's not the case either. Some of these students have some real interesting stories and some real interesting circumstances, some within their control, prior to them being able to make better decisions, and some that were completely out of their control. And so we want to work together with them. The second word is learning, and I really appreciated the presentation from both our science department as well as our English department. We continue to follow the essential program components model. And every single time new textbooks have been brought to you for the secondary level, we are always including Zoe Barnum or the continuation high school, as well as independent study in those programs. This is not just the easy way to graduate. This is a rigorous program that we're trying to make relevant for our students. This isn't the program where you just drop in for a while from, you know, sometime between nine and noon, and then you're out of there and you still get to graduate from high school. Our expectation, and the expectation that Sherry Jensen and others have really brought to that school, is that this is a very rigorous curriculum, and that it very much follows what the high school is doing. It's just being presented in an alternative way. It's not an alternative education. It's being presented differently. That's really important for a couple of reasons. As we have students that transition out of Eureka High School into this model, we want to be able to pick up where they're at and continue on with that, if that's, if that's something we can do. And conversely, if we have students who go to the learning center for a while and work their way out of it, catch up with credits, we want them to be able to seamlessly come back into Eureka High School and potentially graduate with their classmates, if that's what they desire. So this is not just the easy way to graduate. Some of the things that Sherry and her staff are talking about is a longer school day with more opportunities to earn credits, more frequent checks on student progress and how their program is working for them. Even talking about something as frequently as a daily check-in period, almost like homeroom, where the teachers have their small core group of students, and they're making... and they're making sure that their needs are being met and we're continuing to move them forward. And then more structured transitions both in and out of the program. It's not like you can just walk out of Eureka High School one day and the next day show up at ZO and say, hey, here I am. It's if the decision is made that that person is going to leave Eureka High School and/or they just come into the learning center for a better way to meet their needs, we need to do a needs assessment. We need to know where that student's at, both credit-wise, graduation-wise, and we also need to know where they are skill-wise, again, so we can start to talk with them about the different ways that together we can build that program. So every single time we start talking about books or programs for our secondary schools, we're always including the continuation high school in that. And then the first word is Eureka. We've been beat up a lot of times for claiming that we're the leaders on the North Coast. And we weren't claiming, we were striving for, and we're continuing to strive to be the leaders on the North Coast. And quite honestly, we're very proud of being Eureka City Schools. And so we want Eureka in that name. We want them to know where they are, where they're going. But also, we want to carry on the work that's been done by the Zobarnum staff over the last couple of years. And in this flyer, we state that we have high expectations for student achievement. Again, this isn't just the easy way out. We have high expectations. We want to push these kids as far as they'll let us push them and we want to get them to graduation as quickly as that the two of us or the, you know, us as a group and they as a student can work together along with their family if they have that support. We have programs that are specific to each student. Again, we're not just throwing you in classes because that class is available, we're putting you in a program that's going to meet your needs. We have a caring knowledgeable faculty and at times, they've been hammered a little bit for being at the continuation school. But go to their graduation and listen to the student testimony about what's going on with those students. I will, by the way, tell you that my daughter, who graduated from traditional high school, would say the exact same thing about Eureka High School. But we have a knowledgeable staff and they work really, really hard. The flexible class schedule is the big one. If we have a kid who needs to work in the afternoon, that can't be a barrier to that student graduating. We have to look at how can we get them in some morning classes? How can we get them in some adult education classes? How can we get them in some online classes? Whether that online is taking place at home and we're able to check in because it's an accredited program and/or it's something that we're having them complete when they have time to come to our lab and be able to do it. The sky's kind of the limit. And that's why we really wanted to throw in that online component to it. Because again, we can look at the students we have right now, but we want this program to really remain flexible to meet the needs of our students. The last piece of this is, I looked up the word "alternative" in the dictionary and we're moving from one of the definitions to the other. Because our previous definition of alternative was the first one, which is a choice limited to one or two possibilities as of things, of courses of actions. So in other words, we had like, you could do this or you could do this. And unfortunately, too often it was you can take it or you can leave it. And that wasn't the right way to go. What we want to do now is get to the point where alternative means we're employing or following non-traditional or unconventional ideas and methods that exist outside the establishment and the establishment just being Eureka High School. And it's important to remember that Eureka High School is still meeting a majority of our students' needs. But we can't have those kids that are falling through the cracks and we can't have those kids that are missing anymore. And it's really important that we kind of start to blend that model more as we move those students over from Humboldt Bay High School over to the Eureka Learning Center, that we meet all of their needs and continue in this direction.
So the high school portion of the learning center, what do you anticipate the enrollment to be and how many teachers?
I don't understand your question.
How many high school students do you think will be in this program at the Eureka Learning Center?
You know, I don't know. Right now, and Sherry, you're going to have to help me on this, but right now, ZO Barnum is hovering probably somewhere around 55 students?
Seventy.
I'm sorry, 70?
Seventy.
Because we are under the 80. We're going to be adding another staff member to ZO or to the Eureka Learning Center so we're able to move that number up. It's our goal that we're up somewhere around 100 students.
So less than what ZO and Humboldt Bay has today?
No. No, we're right about the same. We'll be able to accommodate about the same amount of students that we have between ZO and Humboldt Bay. Because remember, we have those seniors moving out. So we just have the junior class that's coming in and then we'll continue to create room as sophomores come up. One of the things that we're going to be able to do is have more enrolled students in the program. Because what limits us is the number of students in a class. So as we have more students that branch out into adult education or one of the other alternatives, it'll free up some seats in the class. So although it may look like by contract we have a hard cap, we should no longer have a hard cap because of the flexibility of the programs.
So ZO has 70 and Humboldt Bay has 40 and so this new program won't be any larger?
It could be. It just depends on what we need. In the beginning, we don't anticipate it needing to be larger. So again, adding another staff member to the current staff that we have, we can go up to 100 students by contract limitations. But then we can also go higher than that because of the flexibility of program. And then if this is something that becomes incredibly successful, we look at an over-under model. Are we now overstaffed at another school, mainly Eureka High School as a result of that? And we have the ability to slide staff members over.
I have a quick-
In 1919, first continuation school started called Gompers in Regent, California. And it was designed for working students. It was designed for students that had to work. All continuation schools have always had a large component which was work experience. That's not mentioned anywhere in the flyer.
We do have work experience, so I will make sure it's there.
Family needs, students with families, students that afterwards support their families. Those components have always been a large part of the continuation program. I'd really like to see that.
I like that the diplomas are in your reach and I like on the front getting students to graduation. And I might be going to change some of the articles.
What is the difference in the two diplomas now? Is it number of credits or specific kinds of credits?
It's both. A student who is a continuation student has fewer credits to earn. It's predominantly elective credits, that they don't have the requirement to meet as many elective credits.
Do they still have the physical education requirement? Same as Eureka High?
Most students, most students, by the time they get to a continuation high school have normally completed the PE portion, although with the change in the rules now, there's probably some more that are going to straggle over that need it. But we still, we offer a PE program.
The, there's a lot of sentences that say "together we will build a program for you" and you've repeated that throughout here. So where is, who are the employees who are the part who help the student build their program?
And the answer has to be, and it's something that we're going to have to do, the answer has to be everybody is a part of that team that builds. One of the pieces that we're talking about is students who are checking in with one of their teachers on hopefully a daily basis. And hopefully that opens up a conversation as to, you know, this isn't working for me or this change is coming in my life or this change has happened and what are some of the options that I can throw at this? But primarily, we have Sherry, the school administrator, who works with students directly on a continuous basis. Sondi Phillips works with students on a continuous basis. We have a guidance tech over there. And then we're also looking at the potential of a, we're looking at other potentials that might play out. Some of those have to be negotiated and some other changes have to be made. But we're trying to be really, we're really trying to keep in mind the need for students to be able to come in, check in, and get pretty significant changes to their schedule in a short period of time.
Or just talk to someone and say, so if I'm a new student and I walk in the office, who do I talk to? Who's the-
One of the pieces that Sherry and her staff are working on right now is how do we transition students in? And again, I talked a little bit about, you know, it's important that we have a little bit of lead time so that we can look at credits. And if they're coming from our high school, we can look at what they have in full credits and partial credits. But if not, it normally requires that we have a little bit of time to get their transcripts from somewhere and have somebody who's trained, have a real professional eye, trying to pull out as many credits as possible and develop that graduation plan. So we have people that are able to do that. But the idea of a transition is so that we have time to set all that up and have real definite start times to when students roll into the continuation high school. And of course, there's always, you know, there's always going to be some of those that it's a real quick need and we got to get that person in right away and we'll have to figure out some type of transitional credit earning. And they've done that over the past couple of years too with the ability to come in the program and work for a while that translates into credits. So we'll remain flexible on that, but-
I guess I'm wondering about a checklist of some kind in the office that, you know, new student comes in and whoever is working with them is ensuring that they've checked this and that and that, you know, all the things that the student needs to be successful. It seems to me that the student that goes to a school like this needs to know that there are adults who know their name, who are helping them, you know, so that they don't fall between the cracks because that's probably what happened to them before. So I get a little worried about it getting too big, but is that, is that a goal? I mean, is, am I?
I think if you, if you currently coming in as a new student to our office, you get greeted by a warm secretary and if I pop out of my office, I say hello. And so you get that personal thing right from the beginning if you're coming in on the continuation side. And we start talking to the students right away and telling them about their registration packet. And it is a process. Now, we're hoping to streamline it to lessen the impact on academic programs so that possibly maybe like every other Monday is actually the day that the students would go in the classroom. But prior to that, they would have come into the office, talked with us, we would have looked at their credit needs, had an intake, learned about the rules, done some hopefully some pre-assessments on their skill levels so that the teachers could immediately start putting them in the best instructional route for them. And then they'll go in. So if we had two students coming in on one Monday, they'd be going in with another student into the program and the teachers would have already had their names on the goal sheet. So I think that that personalized component is really important and that they would feel very welcome as part of our school community. If they needed extra time, we would have taken them over to the adult ed side to do concurrent enrollment. So it's all part of the process. If you came over right now, it's already like that. We all talk and kind of hand people off and help them give their work.
That's what I, great. Great. Sounds good.
One of the past issues that was difficult to deal with was the student who had basically not acquired any credits in freshman or sophomore year or a large portion. So talking about having focus on juniors and seniors, is there a component to pick up or where's the handoff on the sophomore who has 30 credits at the end of the year?
Well, at code with alternative ed, we can only take 16-year-olds and up. So those are the student population that we need in that continuation school model at this time.
And my question then, is there any place in this alternative school setting? Or what is the mechanism for dealing with underclassing at high school?
If we have students who, first off, it's a large part of that responsibility falls on Eureka High School. We've talked a lot in this, at this board about what we're doing with intervention programs and how we're continuously assessing our students and looking at where they are through benchmarks to better meet their educational needs. If we have a student who has just completely fallen out, unfortunately, a lot of times it has a lot to do with attendance and there's ways to fix that through SARB. But a lot of them are also severe behavioral issues at that point. And really, a lot of those fall out of Eureka City Schools and then are picked up because normally there's an association with EPD or the Sheriff's Department or someone like that and they end up at a community school. For those really, really rare students who just for some reason shut down completely academically and they're still below 16 years of age, what we're going to have to do is start utilizing components of the learning center that are still allowable by ed code. So what we're going to have to look at is how do we meet that student's needs through home and hospital? If that's an appropriate place, through independent study and through online programs and an attempt to get them to speed back up and get to a place where they have the credits. They can do it. You know, we, Zobarnum is filled with a ton of success stories about students who walk in as a junior and have 40 credits and through a lot of hard work and determination get there. And it may take an extra year, it may take some summertime, it may really take some loading, but it's possible. The ability to earn credits quickly is there. They just have to do it.
On the front, you have Eureka Learning Center. And on the back, you have Eureka Learning Academy.
That's because we changed it about five times.
Yeah.
Where do I have academy?
It's actually on the second line.
Oh, okay.
Not on the-
Oh, there it is. Thank you.
And I have to ask about that second fragment.
Fragment?
The Eureka Learning Center is designed to get each and every student to graduation. That's a sentence.
But utilizing a combination of programs to meet the needs of our students is a fragment.
It is.
Wow.
So it can be by utilizing or-
I'm going to have to say on camera, I believe that Sondi Phillips was on the typewriter. Was she not? We will fix that.
Just put "by utilizing."
Sorry, Sondi, had to throw you under the bus there. Sondi did a fabulous job. She had like seven other people telling her seven different fixes at seven different times at seven different places and somehow she did it.
Very nice.
The question was asked, can we produce these? And the answer is yes. I kind of feel like the $6 million man. We have the technology, we have the ability, we can get this done. We, of course, it'll gloss up, it'll be a lot prettier. Again, there's some artwork and color that needs to be added to it, but we can get a prototype to the board prior to handing them out. And then one of the pieces that, as Sherry was talking about, what's already being done over there, they're already reaching out to our juniors at Humboldt Bay and letting them know that this is going to be a program that they're going to be very successful at. So they're already hearing this, but we're going to get these in students' hands as well as in the community, so.
So you're thinking that this will be starting with the start of school in August?
Yes.
At the Winship site?
Yes.
Is that why the name Lincoln is not there at all?
You know, that's part of it, but again, you know, and we weren't, we weren't, we weren't really tied to the name, but you know, Eureka Learning Center fits. And again, we didn't want to make it a one-site kind of place. So like, as people read about, if they were to read about the Lincoln Learning Center, they would think that it just takes place there at Lincoln. And we're trying to break down those barriers. So we're saying, hey, you can utilize all of Eureka City Schools, we're going to get you there.
Plus, you can go Eureka Learning Center, Lincoln Campus or Winship Campus or at Winship or whatever.
Besides, then if we had to move the program later on, we wouldn't have to change the polo shirts. And Board Member Fullerton will be the first to receive his polo shirt.
Any other comments?
I imagine at some point, public relations is going to have to address in terms of phasing out Zobarnum. And I thought maybe a good move would be to contact the living relatives of Zobarnum.
We've done that. Yeah.
It is our understanding they're not overly attached to the name at the moment.
Not if it has the reputation that this is the original name of this.
Yeah. That was a big part of it.
A lot of them don't even know Zobarnum, what is that? And the Barnums hardly know Zobarnum.
Okay. I believe we're at the end of the meeting. There is no further closed session, so the meeting is now adjourned.